Okay, well, good evening. So we're here tonight for, it is seven o'clock. We're here for our public meeting of the Town of Danvers Planning Board. We're here at the Toomey Room at Danvers Town Hall. Tonight is April the eighth, 2025, and it's 7:00 PM. My name's Louis George. I'm the chair. And with me tonight is Gene Hartnett, our clerk, Michael Decoulis, a member of the board, and Tim Spittle. Jim Sears, a member of the board, is, will not be present this evening. So, so we have a pretty full agenda today, so why don't we get, get started? I'm sorry, I should say also that Josh Morris, Principal Planner with the town, is here providing support today, so. So without further ado, I want to get started with our agenda today. So the first item is Trask Lane, Full Release of Covenant. It's a request for a full release of a covenant established on August 28th, 1972, which is associated with the definitive subdivision plan entitled, "Propose Access to Folly Hill Development, Danvers, Massachusetts," and dated June 2nd, 1972, and also known as Trask Lane, Danvers, Mass. And Josh, I believe that this is, the applicant has requested a continuance?
That's right. They've, they've requested a continuance to our next meeting in April, on April 22nd.
Okay, got it. And it's just where, I believe that they're working on some, some engineering issues or that sort of thing?
Yep, we're just waiting, so, we're waiting from a memo, our correspondence from the development team, just regarding an item, just regarding like the Trask Lane Road, so.
Very good. So what do we, so we need from us a motion to continue the, the meeting on Trask Lane to our April 22nd?
That's correct.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion. Is that something? Gene?
Make a motion that we continue Trask Lane to our next meeting, April 22nd, 2025.
Okay, motion's been made by Gene. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike Decoulis. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, so that's been moved to our April 22nd, 2025 meeting. Okay, so our next agenda item is 32 Maple Street, AKA 30 to 36 Maple Street. It's a request by Robert G. Scaroni, trustee, for endorsement of an approval not required, A and R Plan for 32 Maple Street, AKA 30 to 36 Maple Street, Assessor's Map 43, Lot 353, as a perimeter plan showing the property lines of an existing lot. The property is located in the Danvers Town Core DTCC zoning district. Before the applicant begins, before we begin on this, I just wanted to make a note here. I am a member of the Board of Trustees of the Danvers Historical Society, which actually is a direct of butter to this property from the back, and so just out of an abundance of caution, I'm not going to be participating in this, in this discussion or in any sort of vote today. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away and I'm gonna pass the, the chair to Gene Hartnett to serve as acting chair, and Tim Spittle to serve as acting clerk.
Good evening, Chairman, Board members. Robert G. Scaroni, I'm the trustee of J. Gabb Realty Trust, have been the owner of 32, AKA 32, 36 Maple Street for over 35 years. We have prepared an A and R Plan, not depicting a subdivision, requesting an endorsement as a perimeter plan. It is basically to preserve the existing zoning. My executive summary states the same, and thank you for consideration and an endorsement.
Okay, we'll go to the board with any questions. Tim?
Yeah, if helpful, just to talk through, I mean, we don't see a before and after, so what the proposals are for actually changing on the, the image we're seeing here.
There are no proposed changes to any lot lines. There are no proposed changes to the existing plan that's been in existence since it went on record at the Registry of Deeds. And really, the only purpose here is to demarc between existing property lines and for protection pursuant to the general laws of Massachusetts.
All right, no other questions?
Mike?
No questions, thanks.
And I don't have any questions. So do anyone want to make a motion? Actually, this is not a public hearing, but does anybody from the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the A and R for 32 Maple Street?
So moved.
Second.
Well, I think, Tim, I think you have to make the, you-
I make a motion that we approve the A and R for 32 Maple Street.
Second.
Okay.
Is all in favor?
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much for your consideration, and I'll be in touch with Josh when Joe's planned. Thank you so much.
You want to get, you want to get, oh, yeah.
Never come back.
Thanks very much. Okay. Okay, thank you. And picking up on the next agenda item, we have a public hearing for, I believe this is a continuation of a public hearing that we had previously begun in a prior meeting for 50 Independence Way. It's a request for site plane review pursuant to Section 4 of the zoning bylaw submitted by Chick-fil-A care of Bowler Engineering for property in the Commercial 3, C3 zoning district. The applicant proposes a standalone restaurant with a drive-through and associated site modifications, map 63, lot 5, unit 1. Okay, so if the applicant is here, you can please identify yourself for the record. And one, just one note as well, if you do wish, I know we have something on the screen, we do have, actually have a portable microphone, if you wish to use as well, or you can just, you can speak from the podium, whichever your preference.
I should be able to present from here.
Okay. If you could just speak up for the-
Good evening, everyone. I never have to move the mic up, but good evening, everyone. My name's Joey Fonseca with Bowler. And here, just to, just to recap some of the changes that we've made since our first hearing here, so I'm just gonna kind of just walk through a couple of the major comments that were received. I think the biggest-
If you could just also, just for those who might not have, who might not have, you know, attended the prior meeting, if you can just give a, just a very brief overview in terms of the, of the proposal?
Oh, sure. So this site is the current Friendly Toast location. So the proposal for the Chick-fil-A's to, to remove or demo the existing Friendly Toast building is shown here on the screen, it's kind of that turquoise color, located sort of on the west side of that Independence access road there. So the proposal is to demo the, the existing building and then propose a new approximately 500 square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with drive-through. The next slide, Josh will show kind of the proposed conditions. So as you can see on this slide, just briefly, in red is, is the outline of the existing Friendly Toast building, so the, the proposed Chick-fil-A restaurant is generally in the same location there, and a lot of the parking that was along the perimeter of the site will now be more of a drive-through use here. There's a three-lane entrance that merges down to a, a two-lane at the pickup window, and then there's a bypass lane on the outside of it throughout. As you can see here, there is a vast amount of landscaping that's being proposed here. There is a pretty substantial reduction in impervious coverage with this, with this site. It's about 9,000 square feet of impervious coverage. Currently, it's just kind of a large parking lot throughout here, so we're trying to just, just propose some additional greenery here, and certainly some buffering and, and propose some interior planting within those parking areas. But it's, it's a, it's a, you know, it's basically a modification to the existing site location. The building's kind of in a similar spot there, and then north of the building is where we're proposing a trash enclosure location here. So there will be a, you know, reduction in parking here, but we've been, you know, coordinating that with staff as well as our, our client and certainly the property owners for the mall here, and feel that the, the parking values and the parking totals that we have here, you know, we're, we're in agreement with, with the, the total parking that's here that we've arrived at for this build, is ample for both Chick-fil-A as well as the, the adjoining uses here. Utilities are going to be servicing the building similar to what's, what's there today. We're basically just going to be extending some of those utilities, water, sewer, to the building. There'll be a new electric, new gas run to the building, and then there'll be some drainage improvements as well. A lot of the comments pertaining to drainage, we've been working through with engineering at DPW, and that's a lot of the comments that we've addressed since, and, and I think we've, we've had some communication from DPW Engineering that they're comfortable with where we're at with the plans now, and there'll be some additional, you know, coordination items that we'll have as we, assuming we, if we receive approval and we move on to a building permit phase, that we'll continue to coordinate with DPW on that. That's just kind of, kind of a broad overview of it. As I mentioned, we have been coordinating with DPW Engineering. I think we're, we've addressed the majority of their comments, and the few that are left will just be handled during a construction, a building permit phase. There were a couple of comments that came out on, on the first hearing, just pertaining to some of the landscaping. Confirmed with our landscape team that the plants that we are proposing, there's a table on this, on the sheet as well, they are drought tolerant plants. To hear, I know that, that question came up at the last hearing. The paving that was, that was performed off-site, there's been a lot of communication back and forth with our team, with Josh. I know there's a condition in the, the draft decision that we had received, and we were, you know, we reviewed that, and we're okay with the language that is, that is in that condition, that is on that condition. Let's see. And I think that was really it for some of the comments that we had. I think a lot of it, like I said, a lot of it was just kind of some final cleanup and coordination items with DPW Engineering. Josh had passed along the, the draft decision. We reviewed it, you know, we're in agreement with the conditions that were listed there. Here, happy to answer any additional questions if there are any on this application.
Okay, sounds good. And I'll, I'll turn it over to the board in a moment for questions, but just an initial, what is the, what's the timeline in terms of construction and occupancy and such? Do you, do you know in terms of when that?
So we, we don't have, if I had my Chick-fil-A hat on, it would say immediately, but it, but I know that there are some lease negotiations that are, that are occurring here, so we do have to wait for that to, to, to be handled, but I, it will be, I believe it's going to be a 26 construction.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'll turn it over to, I'll turn it over to the, the board for any questions by members of the board, because this is a public hearing. We'll also entertain questions by members of the public as well. But why don't we start with the board first? Gene, any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't have any other further questions, thanks.
Okay. Mike, any questions?
No further questions, thanks.
Okay. Tim, questions for the applicant?
I'm just reading the condition you were talking about, because I think one of our primary concerns was the maintenance of the roads in the development area. The only documents I'm seeing here are a letter from an asphalt company saying it's fine, and then a-
Just, yeah, for, not to cut you off, Tim, just for informational, which might not have been, corresponded well to the board, so between-
You could explain what, what happened, what transpired, what consultations were.
Yep. So between our previous meeting on this and tonight, I did reach out to Simon regarding their condition associated with, like repaving and maintenance of the roads in, or within the Liberty Tree Mall, and the, the north and, all right, let me, let me show you something real quick. So I reached out to Simon just for kind of a status of where we are in terms of their maintenance. And so on this, I don't know if you can see it, but the colored area on the map, like area A, B, and C was, was work that Simon had done in the fall of 2024, and so-
Josh, is that on Commonwealth, which is the same street as the, as the Logan Express?
Yes.
Okay.
But I was just giving, I was just giving context. And so in correspondence with Simon over the past week or so, they have written emails to town staff that, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but the north and south lanes of the, the entrance and exit into the mall from Endicott Street, that they will be repaving in May, in May of, in the, over the next month or so of 2025.
I didn't see that in our materials, that's it?
Yep.
Did I miss something?
No.
Okay.
It was, I, I did.
Okay, good to know.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's, just to make a sort of meta-comics, I think that's outside of what's the responsibility of the applicant. I think the plan and everything we've seen updated has been good. I have no other questions, but I think there's a nagging issue here that it's a bit of a whack-a-mole, where, oh, they'll fix the thing we asked because we can deal with the thing right in front of us, but like, my kids love Skyzone, and that parking lot is like a war zone. And so I just think that, you know, this is clearly not someone who's really motivated to upkeep, make our town nice, things in our town nice. It's a little frustrating. This is how we have to do it.
So just while we're on that subject, Tim, so the, the exit and entrance, main entrance, main entrance exit from Endicott should be redone, and like I said, by the end of May of 2025. But if you could see my cursor, the kind of section of Independence Way between the two areas that will eventually, you know, very soon, there's this sort of gap or area, there is a condition in the decision that we'll be working with the applicant team over the next 18 months, just evaluating and just making sure that the condition of this section remains positive, and if not, that we would work with them and Simon to, to also do that section if, if needed, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to see the condition about reassessing that. I'm actually, now that you've mentioned it again, the, so it's in writing that they would repave a section of the road, but it's not actually in the decision as a condition.
Which, which, what are you talking, talking about this one, this?
No, the condition here says that they will work on the section of Independence Road from Commonwealth to the intersection, the T-intersection of Independence Way.
Right.
They will reassess.
So that's-
They will be repaving a different section.
Simon will be, and associated with the Logan Express, maybe not articulate or communicating it well. Simon, and associated with the Logan Express-
Oh, the Commonwealth Av stretch. I understand.
They already, so-
But isn't it also the Independence Way, so the center, isn't that being repaved as well?
We're gonna, we're gonna work with Simon to, like, find, do like the line of demarcation, but I guess I was just giving context, Tim. So this, the one, the colored thing on the map was associated with the Logan Express decision, and then this section of Independence Way is also going to be done by Simon because of Logan Express, and the applicant in Chick-fil-A that's in front of us, we will be evaluating this over the next 18 months, this section.
So now you've helped me understand-
Yep.
That it's the Independence Way stretch that they say, that is not currently on the map, area A, B, or C.
Yeah, it's kind of like below, it's kind of like below where that area C is, it's just, yeah, so it's like that gap between what was done in the fall, what's going to be done in a month, and then there's that little, there's that gap that we're hoping to work with them over the next-
Yeah, my point is just it's not captured anywhere in the decision.
No, it, it is in that, in that, that reassessment one. It's not, yes, it's not being paved, but we have in the, in the packet, there was a third party saying that the condition currently of that section is good. So for where we sat, we said, all right, it's good right now, but in the next 18 months, let's reevaluate the situation. And if and when it's not, we will work with them to, if needed, if that condition that used in the decision, we will, that will, that work will potentially also be done, so. Yep.
I also feel like you shouldn't have to describe this to us. Like, is anyone here from Simon Properties?
No.
Of course not.
It's fine.
Okay, no other questions?
I, yeah.
Thank you. Back to paving, just for the applicant, does, do you have anything further to add about the paving? Because I know that the, that there's a memo here from, I think dated March 28th, from Asphalt Services, Inc., that talks about the, in essence, talks about, per your request, we've assessed the driveline in question between Commonwealth Ave and the access road of Independence Way, the road between mainly Tubbs Parking Field and Firestone Parking Field. The condition of the asphalt is good, and there are no hazards. Typical ongoing maintenance is required, as would normally be required for any typical asphalt surface. Signed by John Baldicero, the president of the, of Asphalt Services. So I think that's, so that says, as of this moment, the, that the area's okay, but I think the concern was, and I know, I think that staff expressed that this is a, that's a snapshot in time, this is not going to necessarily be up and running for a while. So I think that was the concern about having a reassessment in 18 months, within 18 months to ensure that everything is A-OK on the paving, because that's just been a continual issue. And I'm looking, you know, I think I raised a question about paving at our last meeting too, because we're also looking at demolition taking place, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot going on there. So do you have anything further to add in terms of the applicant with respect to paving?
No, other than that, you know, we're agreeing with, with that condition number three on there to reassess that.
Okay.
That, that decision was reviewed, you know, by Chick-fil-A, by our team, and we agreed that, you know, we'd agree with that condition.
Okay. Just a couple of questions that I have with respect to this, you know, to the application. I, I think it was something, you know, and I, I know the last time that we were here, the reason that we ended up, you know, continuing it, because I think there was still some additional work that had to be done with respect to engineering, and sort of comments from engineering, and I know there's a, and we, and we just, you know, I think you alluded to, we do have an engineering memo dated April 7th, and so any things that you're willing, you know, there's, you know, no issues in terms of your, your, your committing to comply with any of the terms and conditions in the engineering memo?
No, because I mean, a lot of that is just kind of, just general, I'd say, construction-related activities-
Okay.
That we, that we would be doing, we would be reviewing during a building permit phase, phase here. There are some items like a hydro flow test that we'll need to perform. They're also requesting a, kind of a CCTV inspection of that large drain line that's bisecting the site. What, you know, we'll have that performed, and we'll share that information, and we'll certainly evaluate if there are any issues with that existing service.
Okay.
But other than that, the, the majority of it is just items that the, that those details will just get ironed out as we proceed with-
All right. So I guess, so you're, you're willing to, though, satisfy all the comments in there in the memo?
Yes.
One question I did have, and this, this is something I raised at the, at the last meeting, and it's just a concern I have, just because of the, in terms of your sort of pedestrian access, and I raised that in terms of, just concerns in terms of, you know, crosswalk and, and really pedestrian safety. I mean, more of a concern too of like, if you're, someone's, you know, someone's getting their, their tires done at Firestone and wants to walk over for a sandwich, or someone who might be an employee of, of one of the, of one of the surrounding stores. What's, any, any further steps in terms of, with respect to pedestrian safety, or crosswalks or any of that sort of thing?
Yeah, so we, we do have a couple of crosswalks that we're showing that are directly associated with our building, and just getting customers and employees or team members from the building to say the trash enclosure. You know, other than that, the existing mall, there's just no pedestrian connectivity throughout. It's an older mall.
Yep.
So parking was a big concern here, just, just due to, you know, different stakeholders throughout this mall. We were squeezing in as much parking as we can to fit, you know, the Chick-fil-A build here. Looking at it from a pedestrian standpoint, if we're providing additional crosswalks throughout from Firestone, sorry, to the Chick-fil-A building, we'd be looking at removing a pretty substantial amount of parking to make that happen, just to provide, I guess, a safe access through there, not just striping, so you're sort of evaporating through there. In our opinion, I think we're, we're trying to just keep the, the condition that's there as kind of your, your older, you know, open malls kind of setting here. You know, I'm not sure if there are any future plans for the mall to provide it, but if there are, you know, I'm sure Chick-fil-A would be involved in that, and they would also, you know, review any, any connections.
Okay. Got it. Okay. Josh, any, any questions, any comments from staff in terms of that, in terms of the, you know, sort of crosswalk issues? I mean, that wasn't something flagged in engineering, was it?
No. I mean, we had, we have met several times with the development team. That was an item that came up. You know, we were, we don't necessarily want to just add cross, I mean, essentially, it's sort of just like adding crosswalks potentially is like a potential, you know, remedy here, but I think-
You understand, you also don't want to create an attractive nuisance, I guess.
And that, we just didn't want to create, we just didn't want to add crosswalks, and not random places, but just kind of creating conflict points necessarily that we didn't want. We want to create a problem if-
We want to create a problem if there wasn't one, right? Create a new problem, a new issue, a new problem.
Can you explain conflict point?
Or just like, you know, putting crosswalks in places that maybe is not an appropriate location, just so we could say that we're trying to like increase, you know, the pedestrian activity or like, you know, we talked with the development team about potential places to put crosswalks and why would it make sense in terms of, you know, just, you know, obviously pedestrian safety or safety being, you know, a number one concern. And I guess, from a staff perspective, there weren't a lot of places that were obvious where you would add that there's a crosswalk, there, where, a location where a crosswalk is missing that should be added.
Okay.
So I definitely agree that it's, that, you know, it is important for pedestrian activity and there will be folks from the mall, probably very likely like employees and some of the other, you know, businesses at the mall, or, you know, the outbuildings at the mall, like that Michael's kind of set of buildings that, you know, employees from those businesses will likely walk here for lunch. There just wasn't a lot of great locations to, to add additional crosswalks. So I think where I sat, you know, this, what's being proposed is, at this time, satisfactory.
Okay. What, could you show me though, the, at least, so at least going from the, sort of the external pedestrian access and cross, could you show me again sort of the, at least within the, the scope of the site with respect to employees going into the, into the store, crossing over the drive, you know, the drive-through, that sort of thing?
Sure, so this plan might highlight-
Which one do you think would be better, Joe?
Probably that rendering, I can, I can describe it.
This one?
Oh, yeah. So north of the building, there's a crosswalk and it, and while it isn't a straight sort of north-south crosswalk there, it's just how that landscape Ben Island landed with respect to some of the doors along that face of the building. That, that provides access to, to a new sidewalk directly across the drive aisle and then provides a crosswalk over to the trash enclosure. That's obviously a dual purpose, if there are, if there are customers that are parking up in that sort of section of the parking, they can certainly use that-
Okay.
To, to, you know, cross, across the drive aisle there and enter the sidewalk and then to the main door. So that is, that is one area that, you know, we've added a, a crosswalk there against for, for team members as well as, as customers. But that's really the only sort of location to have a pedestrian connection there.
Okay. What about the area where the, where the drive-through is? I know that was raised at the last meeting in terms of a concern of even crossing, even safety of team members crossing the drive-through.
Sure, so there, there's, the parking that's alongside the drive-through, you can see those angled parks to the right of that kind of darker shaded area, that's a, that's a canopy that will be-
Can you point it out, I'm sorry to-
You want to do the canopy or the employee parking job?
The canopy where the cursor is now, is that's a covered canopy. To the right of that is where the parking is along that sort of landscaped edge there. So that would be strictly employee parking there. Within or underneath the canopy, there, there is, there will be crosswalk striping in there. And that, again, will, again, serve as sort of two purposes. One, it's for the team members to access the drive aisles when they're hand-delivering meals out there versus when it's just a strictly a pickup window. So that crosswalk will be installed within, within the drive-through lane and that will also be accessed by employees to enter the building if needed, or they can, you know, use the rear door to access the building as well. But again, that outside lane is, is, will be, you know, considered a bypass lane. And then those parking spaces that are along there are strictly going to be for the doors.
Okay. Okay, got it. All right, thank you. Any other questions from members of the, of the board? Okay. This is a public hearing, so if any members of the public have any questions or comments, please go to the microphone and make sure you address any questions through the chair and please identify yourself. So Mr. Bradstreet?
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting, Precinct One. I listened to the discussion about the traffic and safety. Thinking about the age of the mall, the fact that a lot of the present-day drivers drive a little differently than when I was younger. And I think this would be a good time to do a, perhaps a more thorough or better review of the safety factors, whether flashing lights, anything that's available to protect the public. This business would have, should, as I say, draw more traffic. I'd be, I would be very concerned. I don't think they have a concern, they're gonna draw the business. I'd be more concerned about the, the traffic flow and the pedestrians, both in the mall and those that are walking around, who can't afford to drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You're good. Any, any other, any other comments from members of the public at all? Okay, back to, any other questions from the, from the board? Okay. So, so hearing none, coming back to this, coming back to the matter here. So, let's see. I guess I could, if there's nothing further, we can entertain a, I'd like to entertain a motion to, to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Fifty Independence Way.
Okay, the motion's been made by Jean. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Okay. All those in, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None. Okay. So then back to the, back to the, the actual motion itself for the site plan review. Jean, can I ask you to move, make a motion and move the decision?
Yep, so. Site plan review for Fifty Independence Way, date of application, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Date of hearings, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, April eighth, twenty twenty-five. Date of decision, April eighth, twenty twenty-five. The Danvers Planning Board finds the site plan submitted by Chick-fil-A for, excuse me, property at Fifty Independence Way, assessors map sixty-three, Lot five, Unit one, to be in substantial compliance with the criteria and regulations adopted by the town. Details of the plan review can be found on the following plans. Proposed site plan documents for Chick-fil-A, proposed restaurant with drive-through, Fifty Independence Way, Town of Danvers, Essex County, Massachusetts. Prepared by Bowler Engineering, dated January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, revised to March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, consisting of twenty-three sheets. Supporting materials include architectural drawings, prepare unknown, dated May seventh, twenty twenty-four. Traffic assessment memorandum prepared by Bowman, dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. The following submission requirements have been waived. One, Section four point three point one title sheet, the existing dwellings and principal buildings, land use of each lot and zoning district boundaries are not shown on the plan. Existing contours at one-foot intervals are shown on the demolition plan, C one hundred, and the grading and drainage plan, C three hundred. Two, Section four point three point two, site analysis plan, no, no site analysis plan submitted. Existing contours at one-foot intervals are shown on the demolition plan, C one hundred, and the grading and drainage plan, C three hundred. Three, Section four point three point three, dimensional regulations plan. Dimensional regulations plan is entitled the site plan, C two hundred. Four, Section four point three point four, site construction plan. Site construction plan is entitled the site plan, C two hundred. Existing and proposed contours and proposed drainage are shown on the grading and drainage plan, C three hundred. No table indicating amount of earth material that are to be removed, added, or reused. Five, Section four point three point six, utilities plan. The utilities plan is entitled the grading and drainage plan, C three hundred, and the plumbing site plan, P S one hundred. No profile of utilities shown on the plan. Six, Section four point three point seven, landscape plan. The methods for prospecting the plant, should that say protecting? The plant materials during construction is shown on the landscape notes and details, L one oh one. The yard setbacks are shown on site plan, C two hundred. A table showing the percentage of existing and proposed impervious surface and percentage of landscaping is not shown on the plan. Seven, Section four point three point eight, off-street parking and loading plan. The off-street parking and loading plan is entitled the site plan, C two hundred. The construction details and type of material is shown on the site detail, C four hundred to C four oh three. Conditions of approval. The project is subject to the following conditions. One, prior to issuance of a building permit, this site plan decision shall be recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. Two, prior to certificate of occupancy, the property owner and applicant will coordinate with Simon Property Group to replace line striping and install a new stop sign and a new no-U-turn sign at the northbound approach at the internal T-intersection of Independence Way. Three, the property owner and the applicant will work with Simon Property Group to reassess the condition of this section of Independence Way roadway from Commonwealth Avenue intersection to the internal T-intersection of Independence Way eighteen months from the date of filing this decision. If a third-party paving company slash consultant determines that roadway repairs and/or repaving is necessary, this roadway work will be completely, completed by the property owner and/or the applicant within a reasonable timeframe in consultation with town staff. Four, the applicant will satisfy all the comments in the Danvers Engineering Division memorandum dated April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Five, if they, if there are any changes to the approved plans, the use or the conditions on premises, planning staff will review. If deemed a major change by staff, the applicant will have to apply for a new application for site plan review. This project is subject to the attached list of general conditions. Any approval of this site plan review shall lapse within three years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun by such date.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tim. Okay, so any, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None. Okay, site plan's been approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. So our fourth agenda item is our public hearings. This is for sixty-one High Street. It's a request for special permits, waivers, and site plan review submitted by Richard and Stacy Bocelli, trustees and A Point Design, Inc., for property at sixty-one High Street, map fifty-one, Lot three oh three, pursuant to Section eighteen point five point D point five, a parking reduction methods, on-street parking offset, Section eighteen point thirteen, design special permits, build-to-zone facade build-out, street-facing wall offset depth, street-facing transparency ground floor, and Section four, site plan review of the zoning bylaw. Request of waivers pursuant to Section eighteen point five point D point five C V tandem parking, Section eighteen point six point D two D building materials, eighteen point six point E building setback and street enclosure, Figure eighteen of the zoning bylaw, and request of waiver from Table seven point two point C point three C, four court standards of the zoning regulations of the planning board. Said property is in the High Street Mixed Use Corridor, H S M U C zoning district. The applicant is proposing a redevelopment, which would include first-floor commercial space and eight residential units on the upper floors with associated site modifications. And before the applicant begins, just so the applicant, I know it's been, staff made the applicant aware that we are, we are short one member today. But-
I'm figuring this out.
Okay.
Give me a moment.
Very good, we have, we are getting all set up with the new technology and-
How's that?
I can hear you, can hear you fine. So Attorney McCann, you can introduce yourself and begin.
Josh is gone. Thank you very much, my name's Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Richard and Stacy Bocelli. They are the trustees of sixty-one High Street Realty Trust. Richard Bocelli, the owner, is here this evening. He is also a principal with A Point Design, and that is the project architect for this project. Also with me tonight is Jay Palakowitz, the project engineer. He is with Hancock Associates. And what I'd like to do is give an overview of the project and then I'll ask the project engineer to go into detail on the plan. And then Mr. Bocelli, as the project architect, will handle the architecturals as well as the landscaping plan. So this property is located at sixty-one High Street in Danvers. That's the High Street Mixed Use Corridor under the character-based zoning districts of the downtown area. And we are proposing a redevelopment of the existing property to allow for permitted mixed-use development, and that's defined as commercial on the first floor and residential above. We're proposing one first floor commercial, as well as covered parking, and a second and third floor, both of which will be residential. The existing property is improved with a single-family home. There's approximately fifteen thousand five hundred square feet of area with frontage on High Street. Mr. Bocelli and his wife have owned and occupied this property since two thousand and seven. And again, Mr. Bocelli is the architect on this project and has used his knowledge of the property, having been a resident there, as well as his extensive architectural background, to design plans that are in keeping with the intent and purpose of this downtime zoning district, specifically the High Street Corridor Mixed Use District, as well as to design an attractive building that will, will fit with the, the property. The project involves a removal of the existing building. The Danvers Preservation Commission has reviewed this, this application for demolition and has found that the site is not worthy of continuation and can proceed forward with demolition. That process has been completed. The proposal is to construct a new building, as you, as you see here, which will have commercial on the first floor, approximately nine hundred and sixty-five square feet of commercial. That is a slight reduction over what commercial square footage was in the application. And that resulted from, what is a six-week review process through town departments, what we, once we submit our application. And there were some modifications to the plan as it related to some parking that'll, we'll go through. But the total square footage of commercial is nine hundred and sixty-five square feet. The second floor will have four residential units, and the third floor will have four residential units. There will be two-bedroom units each. That represents a compliant by-right density. There is no special permit needed for the density proposed here. This is the density permitted by right in the High Street Corridor zoning district. We could have sought to have a special permit that would have permitted four additional units. We're not doing that here, it's eight units, four on each of the floor. Again, the commercial use and office use is permitted, and the residential uses are permitted as well. The additional amenities that are proposed, to name a few of them, we have covered residential parking underneath, on the first floor, below, I should say, behind, the, the office use. There is an indoor bike storage, indoor trash and recycling room, as well as a small fitness area for the residents of the, of the property. The building, as you see, is, is fully conforming dimensionally to all of the dimensional requirements of the High Street District, including the height. Height permitted in the High Street District is four stories, forty-five feet in height. That is the permitted height. We are proposing three stories here with thirty-one feet, ten inches. Each of the residential units, two-bedroom units, modest in size, about thirteen hundred square feet for those, those units. Open amenity space, outdoor amenity space, I should say, is required in the downtown area at twenty percent. And we are proposing twenty-three percent outdoor amenity space. This site, as you'll see on the site plan, also includes a wetland area in the rear of the property. That wetland area is not included in the outdoor amenity space percentage. That's over and above the twenty-three percent of outdoor amenity space. And it certainly provides wetland area, habitat, open space as well. But that is in addition to the twenty-three percent of outdoor amenity space that's provided. amenity space that's provided. That amenity space is defined under the different categories in the bylaw as a forecourt and a common yard. That goes along the side, the westerly side, as well as the rear behind the building. It really is a beautiful, thought-out landscaping plan that includes drought-resistant plantings, pavers, and sitting areas, and it really is very attractive, and you'll see that plan when Mr. Bocelli presents that. Parking on this site, we have all of the required parking for the residential units are provided on-site. We are providing two spaces per unit. High Street District does allow us to provide only one and a half spaces per unit, but we are providing a full two units, two parking spaces per unit for a total of 16 parking spaces, 12 of those are tandem and four are not. In addition, we are proposing allocation or inclusion of the three parking spaces along the street frontage, as is permitted under the zoning district, to be the spaces for the commercial space. The commercial space of about 960 square feet, we need to provide three parking spaces, and we have three parking spaces. They are public spaces. They will continue to be public spaces. They're no way restricted or reserved, but the bylaw allows us to consider those as the parking spaces for the commercial uses on the site. Finally, affordable housing component. We have eight new units here, a total actually of seven net new, because there is an existing dwelling here now. We are providing one two-bedroom unit as the affordable component, and that would be affordable through the state process to be categorized as an affordable unit under the local affordable subsidized housing inventory, and that's all part of this project. So we are fully compliant there. We're requesting really very minimal design type of special permits and some waivers associated with that, but this development has really been designed to be compliant and to meet certainly the intent of the High Street mixed corridor district. So at this point, I will turn this interesting microphone over to Jay Polakowitz. You have a pocket. I had to hold it.
Yeah, if you can just introduce yourself for the record and...
Can everyone hear me? All right. Jay Polakowitz with Hancock Associates. Josh, do you mind going to page two, the existing conditions plan? So this is the existing condition of 61 High Street, starting at the right side of the plan. This is High Street, a single-family dwelling here with a parking area, driveway. The backyard is developed as lawn and grassy area with a patio. All the way over to the west, we have the wetlands. So there's also a 20-foot town Danvers sewer easement along the southern property line. Do you mind going to sheet C 4?
C 4?
This one. Yep, this one's good. Yep, that one. So this is the proposed conditions. Again, High Street on the right side. This is the proposed eight-unit mixed-use building. The backyard is going to remain as lawn area. Down here, we have a permeable paver driveway. Up here, we have a permeable paver walkway, which is also part of the amenity space. It's the forecourt, as well as the area in back here is also considered part of the amenity space. At the rear of the site, there is a retaining wall. That retaining wall is for the stormwater system. We need to raise that out of the water, two feet above groundwater, and so that's why that's there. Do you mind going to the next sheet? So as I was saying, this is the stormwater system. This will collect all the roof runoff from the building. It'll infiltrate it within these chambers, and it'll cut down on peak rates. Any overflow from the system will go out to the wetland, making existing drainage conditions. It'll outfall via a riprap dissipation pad with a level spreader. The new building will receive all-new utility services, so electric, water, sewer, gas. And we did receive a letter from the engineering department this morning saying that they were satisfied with our changes. I think there were three minor outstanding items that are construction items, similar to the last one, CCTV inspection, any plumbing plans to be submitted during the water and sewer process, and that we have to file the stormwater permit. So I think that's about it for engineering.
Richard Bocelli, 61 High Street, and A Point Design. Thank you, Nancy and Jay, for the great presentation. I'd like to touch upon the architecture for a minute here. We'll focus on the front facade. I'm taking a nod to a number of buildings on Maple Street, particularly 56 to 60 Maple Street, 39 to 49 Maple Street, 50 Maple Street, and 36 Maple Street. All are two-to-three-story structures with base-middle-top architecture.
Repeat the numbers again, please.
Sure. 56 to 60, 39 to 49, 50, and 36. I took precedence from all of those buildings. The idea that 61 High is likely going to be the first building on High Street, I wanted to take a nod from Maple Street to try to stretch that architectural character down High Street. Again, those are all two-to-three-story structures with a base-middle-top like what we have here. The material will be cementitious and PVC, so sustainable materials. Again, I talked about the base-middle-top. We have a heavier base with a darker color, some architectural character detailing, calling to the facade composition, Section 18 of the bylaws. We've addressed all of that, where we don't have blank wall, the fenestration, the character. We've addressed all of those aspects in the facade design. Josh, can you go to... Yes.
While you're switching slides, you used a word, I just want to make sure, you used the word "cementitious." Could you explain that, please?
Sure. So we have wood siding that everybody is traditionally accustomed to. So cementitious siding is similar to that, but it's made out of cement material that has a similar look to lap siding. It's just a more sustainable product. So what we're looking at here...
Something like a hurdy plank or something like that?
Exactly. Yep, exactly. So you're looking at three views. Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's good. So here, I just want to call out what we're...
Oops.
So close-up views, looking down the drive aisle between Verizon and the new building with the parking on that side. Top-left image. Top-right image is looking down the side between the new building and the direct, about a residential property, where you see the pavers and the trees. In working through this process with my neighbors, their concern was the proximity amassing of the original building that I proposed, that we were looking at a four-story building. We reduced the amassing of the building. We're very... We looked at how can we provide the screening and buffering that would satisfy the neighbors? They are here, and they could possibly speak to that as well. We had a lot of conversations about that. So we proposed tall, narrow trees, that there are eight of them along the property line, along with a fence that matches a portion of fence that they have between our properties. So we provided that screening and buffering that I believe is satisfactory to what they were looking for. The bottom-right image is looking from the front down the back, and this is the outdoor amenity space. You see the bench in the front, which would be part of the forecourt, and then the series of eight trees and the fence. The bottom-left image is looking across the site to the maple on the corner. Disregard the ADA tactile there, that all of that engineering that came through yesterday and today, we determined that we were removing the accessible parking space, so that ADA tactile is not going to be there. Next page, please. Next page. This is the ground floor plan. Verizon is here. You see the drive aisle and the parking. As Nancy mentioned, we have the 12 tandem parking spaces plus four non-tandem parking spaces for a total of 16, which is two per unit, 0.5 greater than what is required. We have the commercial space on the front of the building here with commercial front entrance, residential front entrance that brings you into mail and all of the common spaces, stair up, and the fitness center back here, bicycle room back here as well. So stair and elevator bring you up to the next floors. Next page, please. So this is the second floor, and the third floor looks the same. There are four units, one here, one here, here, and here with the stair and elevator. Again, as Nancy mentioned, they're all around 1,300 square feet, two-bedroom units. Next page. Next page. The roof plan, we do not have any amenity space on the roof. It is strictly for mechanicals only with roof access hatch to get up to the roof, so there will be no activity on the roof. And next page. These are the exterior elevations. This is the front facade, street facade, drive aisle parking side, side adjacent to the residence, and the rear. Next page. Actually, I think it's part of the site, the landscape on the site. The last page, probably. Sorry, back.
This one, L1 or L2?
It doesn't. Maybe the color one's probably better. So here is the building, the drive aisle, the oak that we're proposing on the front corner. This is the outdoor amenity space. You can see we have a couple of nice sitting areas. We have one at the front facing the street that would be part of the public improvement aspect, and the eight tall Armstrong maples, they're tall and narrow, so they will not grow into the building or over the property line as well. They're very well manicured and grow tall and narrow. I think that covers everything for now.
Very good. Thank you. Karen McCann, do you have any closing hit on, or did I...
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. As Jay mentioned, we have been working with planning staff as well as the other departments, and we do have a, what we feel is a clean letter from the various departments, particularly the engineering department, having satisfied all of their questions and comments. I hope you can see with the presentation that we've made tonight that this is a project that has been designed to really meet the intent of the High Street District and the requirements as well, as much as can practically be done, and then again, some more. This is really a fully compliant by-right density, and the building itself is compliant with dimensional requirements. This project is really what the High Street mixed-use corridor district develops. This is really it. This is a by-right design, meeting all of those requirements. That being said, we do have some technical type of special permits and waivers which are really very minor. The first special permit is, and I'll just go through these and the requirements just so that we're on the record with that information. It is all in the application. The first special permit is to allow a build-to-zone facade build-out of 59.5% rather than 70%. And what that means in all of those terms is that the building's a little narrower than what the bylaw calls for. The bylaw kind of wants an even wider look along the facade, and by making it slightly narrower at 59.5% rather than 70%, it allows us more land for landscaping along that westerly lot line. We have a street-facing wall offset depth of two feet rather than four feet. Again, that's an articulation within the building design. A special permit for ground floor transparency. The ground floor, that's the commercial space transparency, is required to be 60%. We are proposing 35.9%, and we think that's an appropriate transparency for this type of use. It's a commercial use, but it's an office use. You don't need big windows as you might if this were retail, or if it were a restaurant or something like that where you want the big windows. And as you could see from the elevations that Richard presented to you, it's a very nice design. It's uniform. He called upon other buildings within the downtown area for that design. The last is a special permit to allow us to recognize, I'll use that term, to recognize the three parking spaces that exist, the public parking spaces along High Street, to recognize those as being the commercial parking for the very small office use. Again, they remain public spaces. They're not restricted. They're not regulated in any way. They're simply recognized as meeting the parking requirement for the commercial use. We have a couple of waivers. One is the step-back, not setback, step-back requirement. Again, the building is about 31 feet tall. 45 is permitted in the district, but there is a step-back requirement at, because the building is located on the front lot line, to allow the height of 31.5 rather than 25 in that section. But again, the building itself is significantly lower than what would be permitted in the zoning district. I did request in the application a waiver to allow 100% of the residential parking spaces to be tandem. That waiver is no longer needed because we went through the design review process with staff, and we have what is permitted percentage, 75%. 25% are non-tandem, so we do not need that waiver anymore.
Not seeking a waiver on tandem parking?
Correct. Correct. As I've outlined in the application, we are providing some additional public amenities. We have, we are replacing the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk along 61 High Street, and we are also providing a red oak within the street layout section, and the planting of that will be coordinated with the DPW department. And we are, again, we're adding those public amenities. The special permit criteria under Section 18.13 is met, as I've outlined in the application. The project is consistent with the purpose of Section 18 in general by a development with a permitted density, a permitted mixed-use use with commercial on the first floor and residential above, on-site residential parking, and abundant outdoor amenity space which exceeds the required percentage. The project is consistent with the special permit eligibility requirements. Social and economic and community needs are served by the... Social and economic and community needs are served by the project, which provides active first-floor commercial space and new desirable two-bedroom housing units, one of which will be affordable. Adequate safety of traffic flow, access, parking, and loading areas are provided. Adequate utilities for utilities and other public services are provided. Positive impacts on pedestrian comfort and safety are provided by the new sidewalk, as well as we do have that bench that Richard mentioned as well. Tax base and employment, we're providing a commercial space, and additional tax revenue will be seen from this project. The site plan meets all of the requirements for site plan approval under the zoning bylaw as well as the zoning regulations. So covering all of that boring stuff, I think that is it, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
That's great. Okay, thank you. And we'll take, first of all, we'll have questions from the board, and this is a public hearing, so we'll certainly take questions or comments from members of the public as well. So why don't we start with the board? Jean, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, first of all, thank you. I think this, it's a great-looking building, fits the purpose of the zoning. My question was about the handicap-capable spaces, those four that are not tandem. So are two going to be, two for units, and then two for handicap, or how's that going to work?
I'm going to have Richard speak to that, but they are handicapped adaptable, which means if there is a need, those spaces can be made handicap.
Okay.
Right. The code requires that we are capable of providing if there is a need. This building is under 20 units, so there are no accessible units in the building. Where it is an eight-unit building, we only have to show that we're capable of providing. What that really means is if there is a unit owner that has a disability and a need for an accessible space, we are capable of providing it for them.
Okay. So essentially, you're providing two spots per unit, and if somebody needs an accessible space, then they would have either one or two of those non-tandem spaces, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Okay, very good. Mike?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it, everyone. The only question, I guess, I guess I had two, question and a comment, I guess. One question was, if you go to the site plan, I think, Josh, or maybe it's on the overall, sorry, I should probably tell you what page it's on. That's good. So the only, I guess my only concern here is that that snow storage area is just a little awkward, and I'm just concerned with wetlands and like pushing snow into that. I don't think it's a major issue in terms of the site plan. It's just my only, like, minor concern, I guess, is that we're so close to that buffer zone, and because it is wetland, I'm just a little concerned that you're going to have like snow and salt and stuff like that pushing into the wetland area. But again, it's a minor concern. I just wanted to provide a comment on it.
Yeah, the Conservation Commission will certainly not allow that to happen. This project is on the agenda of the Conservation Commission on Thursday night, and this has been designed with their concerns in mind, so I'm sure there will be a restriction on no salt and that sort of thing.
Yeah, that was my only concern, because we obviously know how much snow we get around here. It's going to get pushed up there, and it's probably going to end up in there, and I know we can say it won't, but it may end up happening, so I just, that was a comment.
Right, they'll put restrictions on that.
Yeah. And then my other comment was just, this isn't an issue in terms of site plan, but it was just a tight drive aisle, but I think you know that. It's a tight site, and I think you guys did a good job, like accommodating like what you could, and hopefully helping the neighbors and making them happy. So I just wanted to comment that you guys did a good job and appreciate the work you put into it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
My only, I have a few comments, and then my only question is, you said the type of commercial business would primarily be like an office-type work, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I kind of want to make a comment, because you listed out each of the waivers, and it was striking how many there were, but I actually find it kind of, we're in a different position than we usually are, because most of the waivers seem to be asked for to actually accommodate things we typically ask for.
That's right.
So the facade build-out, for example, in order to accommodate off-street parking, you need a drive aisle. In order to accommodate space between the butter, you need more space. That seems like a good reason to have a less facade build-out. The transparency, I need to see how the transparency thing is calculated, because I've never really understood, like 30% seems oddly low from the rendering that we're seeing. Regardless, I think you've already sort of described that, being appropriate for the type of business. The on-street parking offset, so if you did just, you could technically, if my math is right, fit the commercial parking requirement in the spaces under the building if you did one and a half per unit instead of two for residential, is that correct?
It becomes a little trickier because of the need to have an adaptable space.
Right.
Tandem parking, too.
And the tandem parking, that's right. One and a half spaces works, but when you have tandem, you can't share the tandem space. So with a project that is this small, the one and a half sometimes becomes difficult. It's almost easier to provide two than one and a half when you're talking about only eight units and a project this size. So it also, in practical terms, as was mentioned, the drive aisle is somewhat narrow, and it's wider than it needs to be, and it certainly meets the requirements, but it makes sense to have recognized those public parking spaces along the street for the commercial, because that's really where people are going to park. Rather than trying to come in and go to a business, and you're pulling in and you're parking under the building, it's a little unusual. So it just seems, in considering all of this, it makes sense to allow that, that recognition of those spaces, because in actuality, that's where the parking's going to happen.
That makes sense. In terms of the other waivers, then, the four-court, three-sides, that doesn't seem like a huge issue. The building step-back, is it, is the building crooked? Like, is it only the corner that touches the lot line?
No, what the bylaw says is that for 10 feet back from the street, it's down 25 feet, even though the actual height in the district is 45, that first 10 feet back is supposed to be stepped back to 25 feet. And we're requesting to be able to go to 31.5 simply for a lot of reasons, for the design of this building and impacts of the site that we're trying to accommodate, and the wetlands that we have to deal with in the wetland, no disturb zones in the back. So we've got an attractive design, and that is, again, lower than what it could otherwise be. So that's what the step-back is. It's a weird kind of provision that you find in one chart under the bylaw that, you know, and you're supposed to be 10 feet back at 25 feet.
Okay. I think that's it, yeah. I mean, I'll let go of what I said, I think it's a great plan, so thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
I have some questions for the applicant, and I guess the, I'm very familiar with this site, because having served also as a member of the Preservation Commission, we've, you know, I'm familiar with the requests for the, in terms of the demolition permit from before, and even having done, I think we even did a site visit on the site as well. And it's a very, you know, it's a very well-kept site. I mean, it's a very, you know, the existing property, existing houses, it's lovely kept, and so it's, so, you know, so it's a bit bittersweet, but the, but in terms of the, just in, it's my understanding, I understand Preservation Commission, you know, found it was, I believe, historically significant but not worthy of being preserved. Is the building, will be demolished, or is actually the building going to be potentially moved? I wasn't sure if that, I was just curious in terms of, you indicated it was going to be removed, I wasn't sure.
Sure. So I did look at moving it, and found a site in town that I was working with the current owner to move. I brought my building move company in to evaluate that move, and they said it's just not feasible. And to be frank, they said that the days of moving buildings are really behind us. Moving a building from one part of a site to another part of a site, or a couple doors down, that can be a little bit more feasible, but once you start looking at sites in other neighborhoods, bridges, wires, trees, just make it next to impossible to do. But I have been trying, and I'm not done trying, you know. Maybe Tom next door will take it and put it on his property, who knows? But we are trying.
I appreciate you checking on it, I do. So in terms of the, in terms of the building, in terms of the design, so, and I know that, and I appreciate you referencing some of the other, you know, areas, because I know we've heard some, you know, some residents have talked about it at some of our meetings about, you know, of flat-roofed buildings, and in terms of, and I understand that flat-roof is allowed as a, you know, that's allowed within the zoning here. And so I wasn't sure if you'd looked into doing a different type of a roof style, or...
I did not. I, you know, for a building like this, the design and engineering of it, you know, really calls for a flat building.
Sure.
Put all the mechanical systems up, they're venting through the building. It just makes the most sense for this type of building, and again, calling, you know, paying nod to those buildings on Maple Street, you know, the facade is really what you're focusing on for the design.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I appreciate, like, I think you said 39 to 49 Maple Street, which I think is the, you know, as old timers refer to, is the Tompkins Building. So CF Tompkins, so, which is an older building, and it's flat-roofed, so. The question with respect to the, with respect to the, I guess in terms of the height, because I, and I actually just walked over there today and saw, and was just looking, just sort of comparing it sort of to the Verizon building. What is the current, how would it compare to the height of the Verizon building next door?
It will be lower to what that number is, I can't answer that.
Okay. Yeah, because I know the Verizon is like two stories, but it seems, but you, there's a, there's a pretty, like, almost like a five-foot stairway going up to the first floor, and then the floors themselves seem taller.
Yes. My guess, based on my experience, that building is 40 to 42 feet tall.
Okay, got it. And in terms of your, in terms of building materials, and I know that this is something that we've, you know, that are, you know, we've done other developments, we've, and I think you mentioned it during the presentation, we've generally asked for a, you know, like fiber cement siding as opposed to vinyl, or that sort of thing.
Yes.
Okay. And that's something that you would be...
20%. That is the intention, that it will be cement-to-society PVC trams, yes.
Okay. With a question with respect to, and this might be getting into the, sort of in the parking-ish area, so I know that some of it will be, you know, there'll be tandem for, I guess there'll be 12 of the spaces will be tandem.
Correct.
Okay, so 12 spaces will be tandem. The length is, I know the length of the tandem spot, I believe, is 33 feet. So just in terms of an operation, I know that, you know, vehicles can be, you know, I have a pretty modest-sized pickup truck, which is 17 feet long. So how does that sort of work with today? You know, a lot of people drive, have SUVs and such, and I know the fire department was concerned about the driveway being, you know, not, you know, that the driveway would not be used, like, or parking in the driveway. So I guess the concern I have is of cars sticking out, for lack of a better word.
Can I address that?
Absolutely.
So we exceed the requirement for tandem parking.
Which I think is 30, hasn't it?
Correct, it's 30. And we're also, we also have another foot in front of the parking, where the building structure is, that we're not counting.
Okay.
And then we have a three-foot walk aisle, pedestrian aisle at the front. So technically, we're six feet more than what is required for tandem, so I feel we've consciously addressed your concern.
Okay, so you would take into, that would take into account maybe someone having a slightly larger vehicle, or bad parking job, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Okay, got it. And with respect to the commercial parking on the front, on, you know, on High Street, and I noticed that, so I assume there's currently two curb cuts in front of the existing building, so I assume there will be only one curb cut.
Correct.
And then the, and so the three spaces will be in front.
Correct.
And so I guess the question I have is, will the, the parking, the designated, you know, the tandem, as well as the other parking, will be all, they will be all, that's all going to be for residential, so let's say if you end up, if someone who lives there in the two-bedroom only has one vehicle, will the commercial space start using the residential, or it'll all be in the, in the front?
Yeah, we anticipate the commercial being used on the front, and for an area like this, we anticipate the user being someone like myself, an architect, an engineer, that isn't necessarily having people come to their office, so that, those spaces are required, but may not be used. So we could see neighbors using them, visitors using them, but to your point of the potentially one unit or having one parking spot, their other parking spot could be for a guest.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Which is, there is no requirement for guest parking.
Sure.
Again, we're being conscious to the need for parking and providing more than what is required.
Got it. And in terms of the, I know you mentioned, I think, unit owner, does this anticipate, is this, are these, these units will be rental, or condo, or unsure at this point?
They will likely start as rental and transition to condos after some time.
Okay, got it. And will there be, I think there's a, will there be a management office as well there? Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. I think I have a number of, I think I got most of my questions in, I may come back and ask a few more. Any other questions from members of the board before we...
I just have one quick question. It's not really site planning-related, but obviously it's an older home on the site. Is there any plan to work with like an architectural salvage, or like habitat for reman, or anything to like donate any materials, or is it not really at that point that you can do that?
There is really nothing there.
Yeah, I was just curious. Yeah.
The house, I purchased it from a flipper, and they gut-rehaved the entire house.
Gotcha.
Nothing left there.
I was just curious. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I remember you mentioning that during the Preservation Commission proceedings, that there really wasn't much inside the home anymore, so, okay. All right, no other further. Well, before we go to public comments, I know we received a letter from a, from a member of the public, and so I just, before we, before it came to asking members of the public to give a comment, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive a, an email today from a member of the public, so I just, I'll just read it for, into the record?
That's fine.
Okay. It's brief, and so just, it's from Annette Collins, and it says, "Dear Planning Board Members, my name's Annette Collins, Precinct 1 Town Meeting Member, and I have some observations and comments on the proposed site. Also, I have questions relating to the necessary permits, waivers, and zoning particulars. My overall observation is that this piece of property is not appropriate for the plan which is presented. Traffic on High Street is extremely busy with curb cuts accessing many businesses. It is also across from a busy gas station and very close to our main fire station. Some comments refer to the structure which is proposed. The renderings show a square-box style and a need for street parking for the ground-level commercial unit. Floor 2 and 3, which amount to eight-to-two-bedroom apartments, have a total of 12 spaces required. These are shown as under the rear of the building with open entry. The commercial property on the ground level requires three spaces listed as needing street parking permits. This one piece of property will add to the already-busy High Street traffic. The requests for waivers and special permits listed on the agenda show an unnecessary redevelopment plan and require some explanation as to why. Propose a redevelopment, which will need the Planning Board to say yes to each request. I would ask that the Board deny any special permits and waivers. Thank you." So that was from Annette Collins, who emailed. I just wanted to read that into the, into the record, so. If any members of the public have any, come up to the podium, and please address any questions to the chair, and we have the development team able to answer any questions as well.
Thanks. Nova Samonay Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. I have three questions to, am I going to do one at a time, or just throw them all out there? We'll see.
However way you feel is...
Okay. So with the outdoor amenity space, I'm curious if there's any in the backyard, I know that there's wetlands back there, but is there any sort of private-ish space for the residents where they could like grill or anything like that?
Okay.
Good question.
Okay.
Why is the...
Actually, why don't we see if, is that something that the applicant?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Yes?
Yes, there is, we...
There will be some amenity space in the, in the rear.
Yes, generally in this area.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, great. Is there a reason why the commercial space is already sort of being predetermined to be an office and not like a retail? I understand it wouldn't be a restaurant, obviously, because you would have to build out more ventilation and stuff when you're building, but I'm just curious as to why we're setting it sort of as an office space. I feel like there's... a lot of office space.
Okay.
And not enough, you know, small workshop space or something like that. Um, and my third question is, what are the roof materials gonna be, if there's going to be runoff that goes into the system, that goes into the wetlands area?
Okay.
What, what's gonna be on the roof that could contaminate?
Okay, great, thank you. So, for the applicant first question, I guess, involving the, um, sort of the, the office space versus commercial, what sort of went into the, you know, went into the calculus there?
One initial thought was it may be my office.
Okay.
And then another thought was look, looking at the bylaws, there are uses that have parking requirements, and we fit into the category of, you know, business office use. It doesn't necessarily mean it has to be a business office. There are other opportunities there as well, but that's the category we chose.
Okay, got it. Okay, and then another question came up in terms of runoff, in terms of roofing materials and, um, and runoff. And, and once you address that too, I'm, I'm also interested a bit in the, uh, in the paving as well.
Okay.
But roof first.
So the, the roof will be a traditional rubber roof, you know, vents will pro- project through the roof. Um, there is nothing hazardous or any materials that will be runoff. There, there will be internal drains that come through the building and out into the system. Jay might wanna elaborate on that a little bit, but there's nothing hazardous, um, if, if I'm answering your question.
I wasn't sure if it would be asphalt or something which can do what?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a traditional rubber roof.
Okay.
And sorry, what was the other? Oh, per- permeable pavers?
Yeah, I was asking about that in terms of the, what was the sort of, um, uh, I mean, the idea of having, I think, permeable pavers is, I, I, I mean, I find that preferable just than blacktop.
Yes.
Um, but was there a reason for, for using permeable pavers or?
So, a couple of reasons.
Okay.
Infiltration, you know, we needed the, we, we needed to have it be permeable. Uh, we did address the concerns of salted and sanding, so we're not going to be using those materials for snow removal. So, again, we, we feel we've been very conscious with the proposed project here, and have worked closely with the town for quite some time now to address a lot of these concerns that have been brought up.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. Any other, um, comments from members of the public? Go ahead. And I will also, I asked the applicant to also address some of the concerns that was in the, the written comment as well, just in terms of, um, some of the traffic and things like that. But, go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, Amy Butler, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Um, I think that they have thought out of a, a lot of things, but there's one thing that I really wanna voice a concern regarding. Um, in less than a year, there have been three pedestrians hit on High Street in the downtown area, including two at the crosswalk right by where this, um, proposed building's gonna be. One of the people that was hit had to be med flighted, um, to Boston. In addition, there are frequent traffic accidents there as well. This project, adding a blind driveway, and to get approval needs a special permit for those parking spaces in front, adds even more traffic volume at the location, which could be a very serious issue. If you look at the drawings and the driveway configuration, if there's any on-street parking in front of the building, which appears there will be for the commercial units, I'm especially concerned that it'll make it difficult for traffic coming down High Street, heading towards one-twenty-eight, to see any vehicles trying to leave the apartment unit. That area is very congested. There's a gas station across the street, there's the fire station, there's the crosswalk. Thus creating more congestion and make the intersection at Porter and High Street more dangerous, possibly creating a recipe for disaster, leading to more accidents, injury, and possible death. The last modification to the traffic pattern in the area by the state at one-twenty-eight and High Street, we can all agree, is a nightmare and not an improvement. I think that the plan needs to address this, that the Board needs to address this, that we need to have a plan, maybe a committee with the state, the town, the developer, and neighbors to come up with some safe traffic method, um, for this area. And the Planning Board should not grant any special waivers for this area, especially this particular project with on, on-street parking being counted for the commercial units, um, until, um, there's some sort of consensus of everybody and, um, so there's no more, there's no death or any inju- injury. Um, I understand more housing is needed in the area, and I believe this location just needs to be looked into a little farther with those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I asked the applicant to address, I guess, the, the question of, of traffic safety and of the, of pedestrians potentially, I guess pedestrians as well as automobiles coming out of there, if you have the, if you have a, an on-street parking?
Well, there is on-street parking.
Right.
Um, and it, it certainly is there. The, the sidewalk is going to be improved. As I said, it's going to be completely replaced and approved, and that will be, um, through a process with the Select Board, uh, where we, uh, we get approval for doing, uh, for doing that work, um, and to what they call occupy the sidewalk while it, while the construction is going on. Um, there are a lot of commercial uses along this, this, uh, this stretch. This is a corridor that the Planning, uh, Department and the Planning Board has looked at for redevelopment, and this is what is proposed here. There is a Dr. Danvers Traffic Advisory Committee, and it sounds like perhaps there is a need for this corridor to be reviewed by that committee. Um, it isn't just, uh, this site issue. Uh, it sounds like, it, it sounds like it is more a corridor-wide issue if there's something that can be done with, uh, crosswalks or something that needs to be done, but it's not a, a, a situation where this is, this limited project of eight units is going to exacerbate that. And again, we've gone through, uh, review with all of the town departments, including the Engineering Department. They typically raise issues if there are issues with crosswalks, or if there are issues with site distances, or anything like that. That has all been reviewed and met, uh, and satisfied with the town departments. Uh, but there is always the opportunity, um, for the Traffic Advisory Committee to undertake a corridor review.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to add to that. Being the homeowner there since two thousand and seven, um, I, I respect the comments about the accidents because I've witnessed them, I hear them, and see them happen. Uh, so I, I am aware of those accidents. Uh, currently, there are two curb cuts with a U-shaped driveway, and everyone and anyone uses my driveway to pull into and then back out of because they went past their destination. Uh, so I feel we're, we're reducing that challenge by people pulling in halfway into my driveway, over the sidewalk, and then backing out into the street. Uh, we also set the corner of that building back an additional four feet, so there's about ten feet from the corner of the building to the street. So there's a clear view across High Street to get in and out of the drive-by.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, thank you. Josh was gonna ask town staff, just with respect to this, this traffic issue, you know, I mean, traffic and pedestrian safety, I mean, what can, um, I know it was mentioned that, that engineering staff didn't ra- didn't raise that, but is that something typically that, that engineering staff would raise, as opposed to, you know, the, I mean, is this something, I guess the question is, is it, is it, um, is it worthy to, um, to have, uh, you know, consultations with the applicant and the Traffic Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I mean, it definitely, um, I'm, you know, aware of that crosswalk at the Porter Street intersection. I guess I didn't know that, that number of, I guess we would say current, current situations are, um, it does seem sort of like, uh, something that is either a DTAC-type situation or like a planning, you know, department-type corridor study or evaluation as, you know, this corridor, this section of town, you know, does, you know, likely get redeveloped, sort of similar to this, but at different parcels, right, over the next five to ten, fifteen years.
Mm-hmm.
It's certainly something that, you know, obviously, safety is, you know, the number one issue, or, you know, number one concern. Um, you know, is it, it's hard to say, you know, traffic, there's kinda, I kinda look at it as different buckets sort of situation, right? So there's like the car, the traffic, in just terms of volume on High Street, and then there's, one of the other buckets is, you know, just looking at the pedestrian at that particular crosswalk or that particular intersection, if there are situations, you know, if there were like three, three accidents or issues or crashes at this intersection recently, you know, what is, what is, what is happening, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that further kind of evaluation, you know, at this one particular interse- intersection might, you know, might warrant, you know, warrants more type of research, right, for sure.
I mean, it's part of me is wondering, could be, and I understand what, what Attorney McCann was saying, that this is one piece of it, one piece of it, but, you know, one piece of it, then it's because, then you have another piece, then you have another. And so I think it, you know, I, you know, so in terms of, um, because they are, um, because the applicant is, 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 is seeking to be able to put some of the commercial spaces on High Street, whether or not there should be a, um, you know, whether they should also be, um, you know, required to consult with the Traffic Advisory Committee and town staff to, uh, to at least ad- address potential, you know, traffic safety, you know, traffic safety issues.
If I may, the, this applicant is paying a transportation mitigation fee, correct?
That's right.
Of forty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
Forty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Right.
Where does that money go?
That's interest, that's, yep, we have, that's a, that's a fund.
Mm-hmm.
For transportation, for transportation projects, yeah, downtown.
Forty-two thousand dollars sounds like a, a good amount of money. So.
So, yes, uh, as, as Brian and Erin will allude to, I think late this afternoon, we had this conversation as I was leaving, that we should use that money for these types of things, so.
Whose discretion is it of how we use that money?
Um, I don't know if it's just staff or staff with direction from the Planning Board. I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but it's.
Is there existing reporting of where previous transportation mitigation fees have been spent?
We haven't spent any of them yet.
So everything we've collected for everything we've approved that's had this fee is just kind of sitting in a pot somewhere?
Yes. But it's not, we're not losing it, or, you know, it's, we, with the idea of things as this discussion come up, we might have the ability to do something about it. So.
Okay.
Yep.
That sounds like something we should discuss.
Yes. Um, just for informational, for.
Yes.
The Board, um, just about these three spaces out front. As we speak right now, these three spaces currently exist.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So people could, as we speak right now, they're not creating new spa- just for informational, they're not creating three new spaces. As we speak right now, people can, folks, visitors, residents, people who don't live near here, these three, these three spaces could be utilized today, tomorrow, and the next day. So, the special permit is essentially just the, this development or applicant just being credited for these three spaces up front, but.
The three existing spaces.
The three existing spaces that are already along the frontage of the site.
And Josh, just to, to follow up on that, those three existing spaces would be for the commercial, which, all the spaces pulling through the curb cut are residential, so the curb, trips a day would be a lot less than a commercial property. So all your properties past his property are retail par- like, you have the Old House of Pizza, you have Jimmy's old location, you have McDonald's, you have gas stations, you have locations that are gonna have way more trips per day than his residential property pulling out. So, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is that having those commercial spots on the street, you're gonna have, not have people pulling out more often, you're gonna have just the residential people pulling out more often. So it's beneficial to have those spots on the street, cause it's safer than having them pull through a sidewalk and pull through a curb cut into a street that they're unfamiliar with, whereas people who are familiar with the location, who are residential owners, are gonna be familiar because they're gonna be pulling in and out of there. I'm sure he's much safer pulling out of that driveway than if I pulled out of there, because he's pulled out of there a million times over the last twenty years, so.
I was kinda thinking something similar as this conversation, you know, kind of occurred. Right, I mean, I think the residents, obviously, the first couple of times pulling out of that driveway, it will be new, new, but I feel like, kinda like everyone in our daily life, that we kind of would underst-, you know, after a couple of times, would start to understand, you know, how it sort of works. And obviously, taking lefts will be more difficult than taking rights and that sort of thing. Um, but I think that's a decent point. The commercial or probably more high turnover spaces are not going in, will likely, will not be going in to the driveway, so.
Right, yeah. Okay. So just coming back, I guess, to the whole, you know, to the, you know, so I know we had, so we had a discussion about sort of the transportation mitigation fee that's being spent here.
Right.
And sort of concerns about, about, you know, traffic safety. I mean, how do we sort of reconcile some of the concerns, you know, that our residents have here in terms of.
Sure.
Of traffic safety. I mean, in terms of, is that something also, um, you know, I know the, you know, the applicant has been, you know, I know has worked with town staff on a, for, on this, on this.
Sure.
Plan, um, you know, in terms of, are they, um, is the applicant also, you know, willing to work with town staff with respect to, um, you know, with respect to, you know, the traffic safety issues that may arise from this development?
Did you answer?
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, I think what.
You hear what the concerns are, you know?
Oh, I hear what the concerns are, absolutely. And recognizing, however, that the zoning regulations have built into them this fee.
Mm-hmm.
For transportation study and, and review and whatever is needed along here. So I think what the Board could do as part of this process is recommend that the forty, almost forty-two thousand dollars that's being paid by this applicant for the transportation mitigation fee be used to look at that particular crosswalk, for example, that was raised. I think the Planning Board, while you can't require it of staff, I think you can make that recommendation, having heard comments during the hearing, that that, that at least that portion of the fund, which is considerable, forty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money to look at, at whether anything needs to be done with that crosswalk. And maybe there is something that may, it needs to be done, and maybe there isn't, I don't know. But I think this applicant, as Richard described, has pulled the building back, for example, and the corner that he's talking about is right here, um, to increase visibility, uh, and all of the other comments that we've heard with regard to what's been done with this site and decreasing number of curb cuts from two to one. That's work that has been, uh, already incorporated into this plan by the applicant. But I think taking, I would suggest as something that could be done by this Board is making that recommendation to planning staff.
Mm-hmm.
That that's what that money is used for, because it is a little concerning, and you know that I've had a number of projects, uh, that have paid the transportation mitigation fee, and it, um, apparently, none of it has been used yet, so it's probably a pretty good sum. But I don't think there's anything that prohibits the Board making at least that recommendation to, whether it's staff or whatever department, I guess. I don't think it would be staff, a department that would decide where that money is used.
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to add that, from a professional point of view, crosswalks could be marked in a different color. Instead of just having two white lines showing that you're crossing the street, they could be completely white.
Sure.
They could be hatched, they could be a different color. There could be something that the entire downtown corridor applies to all of these crosswalks to make them more noticeable. Um, and, uh, one, one of those accidents that happened, um, unfortunately, and I know all these facts because the police department came to me for my cameras, um, the, the gentleman came shooting out of Porter Street on a bicycle and just darted right out into the street. Whether he knew that there was a crossing street there or a crosswalk, or the oncoming traffic clearly couldn't see that, you know, maybe there needs to be some overall attention to the downtown corridor, how we cross these streets.
Okay, got it. Okay. Um, not getting, I know, I'm, obviously, we're still in public comment, but just turning back to, I guess, to the, to the Board, what's this? to, I guess, to the, to the board, what's the sense of the board in terms of this, in terms of this, sort of this traffic issue, and, and with respect to the transportation mitigation fee?
Do you have a comment, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I think this isn't the first time we've heard this sort of collective action issue, right, which is, there's a larger problem that one particular development might be contributing to, so do we hold up their development because we haven't solved a larger problem? And one of the only mechanisms available to us to actually address that is a mitigation fee, and so it sounds like we have the tools in front of us to just request that we use that to address this problem.
I would say that our, what we're asking is for them to pay a fee, they're paying the fee, so we shouldn't be holding up their project, it's, it's our responsibility to now use that money to do what we said we should do, we shouldn't do anything to their project, if they're, they're paying the fee, that's what we're asking them to do, and they're doing that, and in my opinion, we should then use the money to do what we believe needs to be done, but I don't think it's at the expense of their project, it's just my opinion.
Gene?
I agree with that.
So Josh, what are your, in terms of, what do you need from, from us, or is the collective, you know, the, I, I think it's coming from the, from the board here, is that, is that, I think, the concern that this transportation mitigation fee, you know, because it is set forth, that it's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a, you know, payment, that it's the transportation mitigation fee associated with the new square footage of the, of, of the property? And so that, you know, that we would recommend that the, that that be implemented for any modifications or, or, or study, or in, you know, that's caused by this project?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, kind of, how we want to use that money is sort of maybe like a bigger, like a bigger kind of question, question, I think, from the, at least from the department's standpoint, so why it hasn't been, when you asked, when you asked, like, why it hasn't been used, I think we're just sort of like trying to figure out what is, you know, because obviously, that type of money is a scarce resource, right? So what's the best?
I think it's coming from the, I think it's coming from the planning board, that it be used for the, you know, I think the consensus is that be used, you know, to address the concerns related to the site.
Okay.
I have a question with that.
Could you go in, we're in public comments, so just, yep, just go in, state your name for the record, please, thanks.
Hi, my name's Eric Butler, I'm one of the neighbors also. A question is, is that's 35, would the town even be able to do anything on that route, or would that be a state issue?
That's another, this is kind of, you know, there's lots of layers to this, and that's, that's a possibility, I don't know that...
Would we be even able to use that $42,000 to do that?
It's possible not, I just, at this, at this moment, I don't know that answer, but it's possible that we don't...
Well, I think it's coming down to the, I mean, I think anything that, I, I think what's coming from, I think what I'm getting from the sense of the board is that we would be making that, that we would be recommending that Town Staff look into that for this, for this property, and if ultimately, you know, to the extent it, it is, it's not possible, then we could, we get, we, we cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess.
Sure, okay.
And then I had another question, looks like a very nice design and everything, but now, what's the, the status of the trash, how many bins will each unit have, and where on the street will that be put?
Okay, great, thank you. There's a question about the trash in terms of, yep?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll obviously have to have private trash collection, we have a trash room, Josh is zooming into it, there is, I provided a calculation and a talk left as well for trash and recycling, based on national needs of trash and recycling, we are exceeding what is required, or it's not a requirement, what's suggested, we are exceeding that internally in the building, and then we will have private pickup, and just like we do currently, it will be put out onto the sidewalk and be picked up by the private collector.
Okay, got it, thank you, okay. Any further questions, members of the public? Sorry, your hand first.
John Bouchard, Crestline Circle, just as a suggestion for safety issues, if you go down the street to McDonald's, when you come out of the drive-through, it says right turn only. Would that be beneficial to something like this, rather than having 16 residents try to cut across High Street? If it was a right turn only coming out of your driveway, they would be able to see up the street and be able to enter traffic very safely, as opposed to cutting across, which is, causes problems. That's just a suggestion, McDonald's did it with their sign.
Okay, I'll, I'll pose that to the applicant, is that, have you considered any of that sort of thing, and I guess, since you live in that, that area, you can comment a little bit about the left versus right and so on?
I have not considered that, and, you know, living here for 20 years, no one lets you out in the street, you have to wait your turn and wait for space and get out there, so I don't see that being any different in the future, that people are just going to have to be patient and wait until there's space to get out there and go.
Yeah, okay, well, I, I grew up on the corner, you know, the corner of Endicott and Water Street, and so that was always very used to, that was the, sort of, quite a baptism by fire when you're learning how to drive.
Sure, I just want to comment too about that whole McDonald's a lot, as most of us know, there is an island in the middle of the In-N-Out, and I see it every day, I walk up and down that street constantly, and people are always going in the out, it's, there are challenges over there.
Sure, okay, thank you. Other question? Yeah. And it's, identify yourself for the record, and...
Yeah, I'm Malcolm Patterson, I'm the next, Rick's next door neighbor at 59 High Street.
Oh, 59.
I just have a couple of, one comment really, and a couple of concerns, first of all, I want to say that myself and Rich and my older neighbor have been in conversations about this project for a long time, he's been very helpful in providing all the information, so I just put that out there, that's, I appreciate that, and it's been well received by myself and by my neighbor. I guess my comment really is, as a neighbor, it's, it's the, basically, the eyesore I do want to see beside my house, going from a, I guess, a residential place that we have right now with our family, having grown up there for this last 15 years, to what is going to be right next to us right now, it's not something that's pleasing to me. Having said that, I do agree that obviously, these laws have already been made for the town, that these developments can take place, and I will say that he's made a nice job on the planning and the architectural side of that. My concerns, the first concern's already been addressed and probably overaddressed tonight about the, the traffic and the issues outside of that house, my kids and myself are going into numerous fights through the years trying to get them across for school outside of the property, I do think that it definitely is not just with people being knocked down, but, and once out there, there's probably been at least 15 to 20 crashes that I have seen myself out there, within that, within that junction itself that needs to be addressed. A couple of concerns just that I have on the property, that's, again, we didn't really get a chance to, but with all the water and the, I guess, I guess, the flow of water going back into the wetlands, how will that affect my property with maybe flooding coming up from the wetlands into my backyard? Right now, I do get some flooding back there, but the potential of maybe more of that with more, I guess, water and everything going back into that wetland area, how can that be addressed that it wouldn't actually come further up my, my, my property?
Okay, and that might be actually, this might getting into the, I, because I, I think the applicant's going to be for a conservation commission, but if you can, if you can comment on that to the extent that it, you know, that relates to, because I think it's relevant to us as well in terms of that.
Yeah, so we designed a stormwater infiltration system that'll be collecting all the roof runoff, so that'll be cutting down on peak rates of runoff, volume of runoff, the engineering department really reviews these plans for that, and they said it looked good to them, so we are reducing peak rates and volume.
Okay, and I guess a question also for the, the applicant as well, I think, again, I don't want to tread into conservation commission territory, but you're, you're going before them as well for, will, will, will they be looking at some of those issues as well in terms of, you know, in terms of, you know, water runoff and that sort of thing?
Sure, they, they look at that, but Danvers also has now yet another layer of approval through the stormwater bylaw, which is separate, so there's a stormwater permit that has to be applied for, and Jay has already been working very closely with the Town Engineering Department, they've reviewed the stormwater calculations and the infiltration system that Jay mentioned, so that's already been reviewed, so there's really three layers of review, all that kind of includes stormwater, Conservation Commission will look at that, but as Jay just said, this project, because of the infiltration system, is reducing not only the rate of flow, but also the volume, both of which reduce over existing conditions.
And a question as well, I guess, just, this came to mind as well in terms of construction sequencing and such, and how that's going, and, again, concern for the neighbors, concern for the neighborhood, the abutters, what steps are you going to be, you're all going to be taking, what, you know, you'll have, you know, what communication you'll have, so if there is an issue that comes up, that they'll be, that, that neighbors will be able to get some, you know, some relief if there's a, there's a question?
Sure, I'm going to let Jay talk to the construction sequencing, we do have a plan that talks through that, but I, I do, just in layman's terms a little bit, I want to say that we can't control the water that comes from the wetlands, that is what it is, we're controlling what's on our property and reducing the existing to the proposed.
Okay, got it.
One, while Jay is getting it there, I will say, one of the conditions of approval will be that we have a construction sequencing plan and phasing plan that we submit to staff, and we review that, and, and part of that purpose is to keep communication going and making sure that any concerns with regard to sequencing and how things are moving forward are, are dealt with.
Okay, very good.
Yes, so the notes on the left, the lowest one is our construction sequence, so we'll start with the installation of our erosion controls, the construction fencing.
Could you speak up a little bit, you said construction erosion?
Erosion control, construction entrance.
Yeah, they're listed here.
Okay.
And then we would do the site demolition, and utility and foundation installation, then building the building, then parking spaces, finishing landscaping, removing all the controls, whatever the Conservation Commission has signed up on.
Right, and what is your anticipated timeline, I mean, obviously, considering, you know, you know, approvals here, approvals at Conservation Commission, what's the, what's the anticipated timeline?
To be determined.
Okay.
But we do hope that we will be in construction by the fall of 2025, but there are a lot of variables that kind of play when you're preparing for construction, so I don't, I don't have definitive answer, but that is the target right now, as far as the length of construction for a project like this, it's likely 10 to 14 months for the project.
Okay, got it, and you'll still, and you'll be, still, you'll, you'll stay involved in terms of onsite and that sort of thing?
I expect to be the project architect for the project, so yes, it is a controlled construction project, so it is my responsibility to participate.
Sure, okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, my just last comment was kind of, you touched on, is regarding the construction itself and what happens during that construction, I know myself and Rich have obviously had this conversation as well, that during the actual, I guess, the demolition, which we, seems to be the case right now, what we talked about tonight, how that may affect my property and regarding the equipment that's been used next to my property, and, and what steps are there, I guess, I just want to state it for the record, that I will obviously take pictures and document if there is any damage there, but if there is any procedure that could help maybe make that easier in that process, then that would be appreciated.
Okay, I was going to ask, you, you're at 59 High Street, right?
That's correct, yeah.
How old is the building, is your house?
I think it's 1910.
1910, okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
Got it, okay, just a question for the applicant, I guess, in terms of, you know, knowing how, and, you know, myself living in a, you know, in a house built in the 1920s, you know, and so with, you know, things that, you get cracks and that sort of thing, so what steps are going to be taken, particularly here, because this is a, it's a, you know, you see the signs, thickly settled, and it's a, and they're older, they're older homes, which may be more prone to cracks and that sort of thing, so what steps are you all taking, sort of, that you would take here as opposed to taking in another part of town where there's newer buildings?
Good question, you know, demolition of buildings like this are very straightforward, and, you know, my experience, the, the 18-wheeler's that jet down that street are much more disturbing to our foundations than the demolition of a wood-framed structure.
Okay, but not just demolition, but also construction and that sort of thing, just, I, I think the, I think the overall concern is, is just be, you know, I think to the extent to be as gentle as possible.
Of course, you know, and I, I respect my neighbors, and, you know, we have a great relationship, we've been working together through this entire process to understand their concerns, we've talked about that, and, you know, I've been doing this for 30 years, and I've never experienced a situation like that, but there's always a first time for everything, so, you know, I am aware of what his concerns are, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Good, okay, good, thank you. Mr. Bates?
Thank you, Bill Bates, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four, first and foremost, thank you to Planning Board for your volunteerism and serving this town, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
This project is, is exactly what we talked about 10 years ago, when we were involved in trying to rezone downtown and High Street, it's exciting, the owner had put out a sign over a year ago, and I went and knocked on his door, because he had a picture of it, over a year ago, I said, what is this, what are you trying to do? And I sat in his backyard and talked about the neighbors and the fact that he had two lots and that this, you know, could be done, so I'm excited about the project, and I hope that you will support it. Couple of comments I wanted to make, I'm also a crossing guard in this town, and we have very poor conditions for pedestrians, I am very excited that, for the first time, the Traffic Advisory Committee, to my knowledge, first time, they have a budget this year of, an additional $10,000 for a rapid beacon sign at Maple and Burley Street, where I happen to be the crossing guard, the neighbors, we went to the Traffic Advisory Committee and said, this is the most dangerous crosswalk that we know of, you'll see the ones at the rail trails, they have these signs, these rapid beacon things, but those were paid for by grants, that the, the good old people that work on that, the trail, rail trail, but we're going to get one at, at Maple and Burley Street, it's been approved, it's in this year's budget, we'll be at FinCom supporting it this, next week, they cost $9,000, so to look at Porter Street and High Street with a crosswalk there, boy, oh, boy, I think that's probably a great area for a $9,000 beacon, and there's a few different ways of going, I'm, I'm working with Aaron Henry right now, because if you look at 114 and the college, Merrimack College, they actually have a push button that will go orange and then red, stop the traffic at the crosswalk, so that the students can cross to the housing across the street on 114. We've asked Aaron to look at that, I don't know what the price is on that, and we don't, we're going to find out, but as somebody mentioned, we have got to do better for our pedestrians in this town, it, it's disgusting, what I see out there every day now is just, it, it's deplorable, we can do better, we must do better, I guess that's it, like I said, I love the project, and to have a local developer, a, a resident do this kind of thing is, is wonderful, and I hope you'll support it.
Okay, thank you, okay, there we go, any other, Mr. Bradstreet?
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One, occasionally in this town, when there's a snowstorm, we have no on-street parking, the town does an excellent job of throwing snow off the road, making large bumpes down the road, with what they're planning on building, if all that snow winds up on their property, how does that affect their, I guess, tenants or the town with them trying to get in, in and out of their property, especially with the tandem parking? I'd always mentioned that the snow storage... I'd always mentioned that the snow storage will end up in the back and hopefully won't end up in the wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
Aside from that, what about the snow out front? I'd hate to see the fire department have an issue trying to go to a response and having to deal with, deal with that snow out front. I know it's minor, but it does snow.
It does snow. Thank you. For the applicant, just a question in terms of, of snow removal. Would you have a, would that be contracted or what is the?
Yeah, there, there will obviously be a contract for snow removal. It will include our drive aisle, the sidewalk. It does not include the street. It comes off the street onto the sidewalk, we will take care of. There could be a likelihood of having to move off-site some snow. I own another piece of property in Danvers and we had to do that this year in February when we had a lot of snow, we had to move some off-site.
Okay.
There are ways to manage the snow and be aware of the limitations we have.
Okay. Good, thank you. Yep, Mr. Bates, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
One other issue I wanted to address was the no right turn or no left turn out of there. That's fine for businesses. You do that to people that are, you know, consumers. But if you're going to be Danvers residents, please don't make that. If they can, like somebody said, if you learn how to get out of that driveway, you'll do it safely. But because they're residents and not commercial customers, please don't put that restriction in there.
Okay. No, I would, I would under, yeah, I would be, in terms of the, in terms of the turning like that, I would be...
It'll work.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to be, you know, again, getting used to, you know, again, growing up on Water Street and even turning from Endicott Street onto Water, the house was like the second one in, having to learn how to use an arm signal so that someone behind you wouldn't go and rear-end you. So, but no, I, I, I wouldn't, yeah, because I'd, I'd also be concerned frankly if you did a, a right turn, like that right turn only, of then to someone going a few doors down and then turning around and doing a, you know, trying to do it, you know, doing a U-turn in like the fire department or something like that. So. Any other comments from, from members of the public? And come back to the, to the Planning Board? Any, any additional questions or, or comments? So, the, I guess, Josh, one thing, just, you know, we, we do want to, just to, you know, just to address, I think, at some, you know, address with, with town staff is the, is as we talked about, I think you, you received a pretty clear, you know, in terms of our concerns with respect to traffic safety, pedestrian, pedestrian safety in particular, and then the, and then maybe, and then use of the, the transportation mitigation fee.
I'm sure the, yes, we will definitely have an internal conversation tomorrow, for sure. So, about that item.
Okay. Good. Okay. So we have, so if there's no further comments from members of the, the board, we have, we have two items that will be, that are before us. So we have the, we have the special permit and we have the site plan, and the site plan. So, so Josh, do we need a, do we need a motion to close public hearing on?
Yes.
Individually?
That's right.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion, and so to close public hearing and then the vote on?
Correct.
The actual item?
Correct.
Is that? All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the?
Special.
Special permit.
It's, yeah, yes, but.
Make a motion, we?
Special permit for 61?
Yeah.
High Street.
Make a motion, we close the special permit for 61 High Street.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion been made to close the public hearing for the, for the special permits, made first by Gene, second by Mike. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Okay, so now we have a, so, so now we have the, the motion itself for the, for the special permit. I ask the clerk to, to read that?
Grant of special permit for 61 High Street. Date of application, February 11th, 2025. Date of hearing, April 8th, 2025. Date of decision, April 8th, 2025. This is to certify that at a meeting of the Danvers Planning Board held on April 8th, 2025, having been requested under sections 18.5, point D, point 5, point A, and 18.13 of the zoning bylaw for property located at 61 High Street, Assessor's Map 51 Lot 303, voted to approve the request submitted by Richard and Stacy Bocelli, trustees of 61 High Street Realty Trust for special permits to allow a mixed-use development shown on the following plans. 61 High Street Site Development, 61 High Street, Danvers, Mass. 01923. Prepared by Eight Point Design Incorporated, dated January 31st, 2025, consisting of eight sheets. Permit Site Plan, 61 High Street, Danvers, Massachusetts, 01923, prepared by Hancock Associates, dated January 31st, 2025, revised to April 4th, 2025, consisting of 11 sheets. Supporting materials include lighting plan prepared by Echo Lighting Incorporated, dated January 24th, 2025, and associated lighting detail sheets. Stormwater report prepared by Hancock Associates, dated January 25th, 2025, revised to March 2025. Waiver from Section 18 of the zoning bylaw. One, color of the base, 18.6, point D, point 2, point D, requesting a waiver to use materials lighter in color tint or shade on the upper floors and materials with darker in color tint or shade on the base. The Planning Board grants a waiver to use materials lighter in color tint or shade on the upper floors and materials with darker in color tint or shade on the base. Two, building step back and street enclosure. 18.6, point E, building step back, requesting a waiver to allow the building to be over 25 feet at the street right of way line. The Planning Board grants a waiver to allow 31 feet, 10 and 1/16 inches in height at the street right of way line with no step back. Waiver from zoning regulations of the Planning Board. One, four court standards. Table 7.2, point C, point 3, point C, four court standards, requesting a waiver to allow the forecourt to be configured with a wall on one side instead of enclosed walls on three sides. The Planning Board grants a waiver to allow the forecourt to be configured with a wall on one side. Special permits. One, Section 18.5, point D, point 5, point A, parking reduction methods on-street parking offset. The Planning Board grants a special permit pursuant to Section 18.5, point D, point 5, point A of the zoning bylaw, parking reduction methods on-street parking offset to allow three parking spaces located along the corresponding lot frontage to meet the minimum parking requirements. The following criteria, criteria have been considered. The supply and demand of public and private parking in the district. Mobility management programs and services that parking provided in excess of the minimum requirement does not result in underutilized spaces excessive impervious surfaces. Two, Section 18.13, design special permits. The Planning Board grants a special permit pursuant to Section 18.13 of the zoning bylaw, design special permits, and finds that the following criteria have been satisfied for varying from specified requirements associated with the development site and building design set forth in Section 18. A, consistent with this, with the purpose of Section 18 in general. B, consistent with any special permit eligibility requirements as indicated elsewhere in this Section 18. C, social, economic, or community needs are served by the proposal such as expanding housing choices. D, adequate safety of traffic flow, access, parking, and loading are provided. E, adequate utilities and other public services are provided. F, positive impacts on pedestrian comfort and safety. G, potential fiscal impact, including impact on municipal services, tax base, and employment are positive. And H, such relief shall not result in substantial detriment to the CBZD or surrounding neighborhoods. The variations in design from the design specifications stated in Section 18 are as follows. A, Section 18.7.7, mixed-use building. One, build to zone slash to facade build-out minimum is required to be 70% and the applicant proposes 59.5%. Two, street-facing wall offset depth minimum is required to be four feet and the applicant proposes two feet. Three, street-facing transparency is required to be a minimum of 60% on the ground floor and the applicant proposes 35.9%. Zoning regulations of the Planning Board. The Planning Board finds the project to be in substantial compliance with Section 7 Character-Based Zoning District Design Standards of the zoning regulations of the Planning Board. Conditions of approval. The project is subject to the following conditions. One, prior to issuance of a building permit, this special permit decision shall be recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. Two, prior to a demolition permit being granted, the applicant must submit a construction phasing and sequencing schedule to be reviewed and approved by town staff. Three, prior to the issuance of a building permit, pursuant to Section 18.11. D, transportation mitigation fee of the Danvers zoning bylaw, the applicant and/or property owner shall provide a payment of $41,616, which is the transportation mitigation fee associated with the net new square footage, 13,872 square feet times $3 per each square foot of increased net floor area. If the new, the net new square footage is modified, the payment amount will also be modified. Four, prior to certificate of occupancy, the applicant and/or developer shall provide one affordable residential unit based on the number of net new, seven residential units pursuant to Section 29 Affordable Housing Provisions of the zoning bylaw. The applicant and/or developer shall hire a monitoring agent, prepare, and sign a regulatory agreement that is filed at the Registry of Deeds and provide a marketing plan to the town of Danvers. The applicant and/or developer shall ensure that one affordable residential unit is added to the state's subsidized housing inventory, SHI. If the number of net new residential units is modified, the unit contribution and/or payment amount will also be amended. Five, prior to certificate of occupancy, all public-related items, including but not limited to the new sidewalks, street trees, and repaving portions of High Street, must be completed to the satisfaction of the Town of Danvers, Danvers Department of Public Works. Six, cement fiber siding or similar material will be installed on the entire exterior of the building. Seven, vehicles are prohibited from parking in the driveway at all times and shall never impede driveway access. Eight, the applicant will satisfy all the comments in the Danvers Engineering Division memorandum dated April 8th, 2025. Nine, if there are any changes to the approved plans, the use or the conditions on premises, planning staff will review. If deemed a major change by staff, the applicant will have to apply for a modification to application to the special permit. Any approval of these special permits shall lapse within three years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun by such date.
Okay, thank you, Gene. A motion's been made on the special permit. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Tim. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, so that's the special permit. Now we'll move on. We need to, I need to entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the, on the site plan for 61 High Street.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing for site plan on 61 High Street.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made by Gene, second by, by Mike. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. All right, so let's move on to the, to site plan review and I ask the, Gene is the clerk to, to read the motion.
Site Plan Review, 61 High Street. Date of application, February 11th, 2025. Date of hearing, April 8th, 2025. Date of decision, April 8th, 2025. The Danvers Planning Board finds the site plan submitted by Richard and Stacy Bocelli, trustees of 61 High Street Realty Trust for property at 61 High Street, Assessor's Map 51 Lot 303, to be in substantial compliance with the criteria and regulations adopted by the town. Details of the plan review can be found on the following plans. 61 High Street Site Development, 61 High Street, Danvers, Mass. 01923, prepared by Eight Point Designs Incorporated, dated January 31st, 2025, consisting of eight sheets. Permit Site Plan, 61 High Street, Danvers, Massachusetts, 01923, prepared by Hancock Associates, dated January 31st, 2025, revised to April 4th, 2025, consisting of 11 sheets. Supporting materials include lighting plan prepared by Echo Lighting Incorporated, dated Jan- January 24th, 2025, and associated lighting detail sheets. Stormwater report prepared by Hancock Associates, dated January 2025, revised to March 2025. The following submission requirements have been waived. One, Section 4.3.2, Site Analysis Plan. The Site Analysis Plan is entitled, "The Existing Site Plan." There is no note containing the number of all trees with a DBH greater... What's DBH?
Diameter at breast height.
Greater than six inches. Soil testing locations and results are shown on the Site Construction Plan, C4, and Utilities Plan, C5. Wetland boundaries are shown on the Site Dimensional Regulations Plan, C3. Construction Plan, C4, and Utilities Plan, C5. Two, Section 4.3.3, Dimensional Regulations Plan. Dimensional Regulations Plan prepared by Registered Professional Engineer instead of Registered Land Surveyor. Three, Section 4.3.4, Site Construction Plan. The dimensions of the driveway is shown on the Dimensional Regulations Plan, C3. A table indicating amounts of earth material that are to be removed, added, or reused on-site in cubic feet is not shown. Four, Section 4.3.6, Utilities Plan. The profile of the water sanitary sewer and stormwater pipe is not shown on the plan. Five, Section 4.3.7, Landscape Plan. The Landscape Plan is entitled, "The Hardscape Plan L1 and Planting Plan L2." The existing grades are shown on existing site plan and the proposed grades are shown on Site Construction Plan, C4. The existing trees are shown on the existing site plan. The yard setback and table showing the percentage of existing and proposed impervious surface is shown on the Dimensional Regulations Plan, C3. Six, Section 4.3.8, Off-Street Parking and Loading Plan. The Off-Street Parking and Loading Plan is entitled, "The Site Construction Plan, C4." The number, location, and dimensions of driveway and parking spaces and a parking table is shown on the Dimensional Regulations Plan, C3. The construction details and type of material for surface paving is shown on the Detail Sheets, C6. Conditions of approval. The project is subject to the following conditions. One, prior to issuance of a building permit, this site plan decision shall be recorded at the Southern Essex Registry of Deeds. Two, prior to a demolition permit being granted, the applicant must submit a construction phasing and sequencing schedule to be reviewed and approved by town staff. Three, prior to a certificate of occupancy, all public-related items, including but not limited to the new sidewalk, street trees, and repaving portions of High Street, must be completed to the satisfaction of the Town, Danvers Department of Public Works. Four, vehicles are prohibited from parking in the driveway at all times and should never impede driveway access. Five, the applicant will satisfy all the comments in the Danvers Engineering Division memorandum dated April 8th, 2025. Six, if there are any changes to the approved plans, the use or the conditions on premises, planning staff will review. If deemed a major change by staff, the applicant will have to apply for a new application for site plan review. This project is subject to the attached list of general conditions. Any approval of this site plan review shall lapse within three years from the grant thereof if construction has not begun by such date.
Okay, thank you. Gene, a motion's been made on the site plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Tim. Any discussion on the, on the motion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time tonight.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And, and Josh, this is a sort of a postscript here. If you can talk with, have those internal discussions and then, you know, maybe report back to us at a subsequent meeting with respect to the transportation mitigation fee and pedestrian safety issues that were brought up tonight.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. And that's something I think we can talk about it either at a subsequent meeting here or also... I'm sorry, we actually still have a meeting going on? So we could actually still discuss that at the, at a subsequent meeting or even at this, more of on a systemic basis?
Right.
This might be something that'd be worth raising and discussing at an upcoming land use summit.
I agree.
Okay. So, okay.
Can you repeat all that, Agnes?
I was just saying as a postscript to that.
I'll watch it on TV.
No, I, no, I think, I was just saying as, as...
I was being rude.
No, it's okay.
Sorry.
No problem. No, I was just saying as a postscript to this, I think we're going to have a discussion, town staff's going to have a discussion with respect to the transportation mitigation fee and as it relates to this specific project in terms of any, you know, pedestrian safety concerns, that sort of thing. pedestrian safety concerns, that sort of thing, taking into consideration some of the public comments, you know, from Amy Butler, as well as Bill Bates as well, from his, his own personal experience, his crossing guard work. And then, then we'll have, I'd like, you know, like staff then to report back to the planning board and maybe on a, on a more systemic matter too. This also, this, you know, the use of the transportation mitigation fee might be something worth having it as an agenda item for an upcoming land use summit.
For sure.
Which I think we're planning on having maybe this coming summer.
Yes.
So, okay, so, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we do have an, just as an agenda item, and this is just for a very brief discussion. I know it's, it's kind of, it's getting a little bit late, is the discussion about outdoor lighting standards. And so this was a, this is just, we just had this in the agenda, just to give a quick, you know, update. We did have the, at town meeting, at the special town meeting, the outdoor lighting standards, the, that article which, which came through, you know, sort of the, the public hearing process. It was, the town meeting amended the, made an amendment to refer the matter back to the planning board for review. So, so it's back before us and so I think we just wanted to, I think what we're looking at doing is, is having subsequent discussions and taking into, take into account some of the feedback we received. I know we received some feedback on the floor at town meeting with respect to, and I think we've received some written feedback as well about the outdoor lighting standards. I think some of the concerns in terms of as it affects, you know, residential uses and such, you know. And so I think the next, so then, so the next step I think is, this is ultimately, I think, we're looking at going to our next, not this upcoming annual town meeting in May, but the, the next special town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, internally with staff, I think the idea is, is right. I think it's not in stone, but the idea is that we talk internally that February twenty twenty-six, we're hoping or we're planning on a special town meeting in that date and that the outdoor lighting standards would be one of the zoning amendments that would be hopefully voted on at that town meeting. So in terms of process, you know, we would have to have a public hearing, you know, in that sort of what we've been doing the past couple of years is kind of having public hearings in that September, October, November, December timeframe, you know, leading up to the, the February town meeting. So I think as we speak right now, that's, I think, how we view this, this item.
Okay. I'd like to see about having discussions sooner than later so that we can, you know, air if there's any comments or concerns. I think they can, I'd rather get it, you know, sooner than later and if people are watching as well, I mean, the, the outdoor lighting stand, I mean, the outdoor lighting standards, I think they're still on the town website with respect to the, from the last, you know, you know, from the, from the special town meeting.
Sure.
So if people have comments or, you know, questions about it, then they can definitely.
You could feel, you could give me, feel free to give me a call or, or email me. My contact information's on the town website. Would be happy to talk to anyone from the public who has any questions or comments about the, the draft language of the, you know, the outdoor lighting standards.
But we would have, again, full, you know, like, public hearings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, in the fall, but I'm saying even like today or in the next couple of weeks or months, leading up to the fall.
Okay.
I, you know, I'd be happy to, you know, happy to discuss it with anyone who reaches out.
Okay, and then we'll, it looks like we'll also have, and again, if, you know, it looks like, I think, you know, from town staff, it looks like we're, we're planning on having another land use summit probably sometime this summer.
Yeah, that's what we're, I think, yes, I think once, I think, yeah. With the new time adjourned board, I think we were trying to just wait for that to happen and then so. The idea is right, we would, we would try and do one later in the summer.
Yeah, I would like it done, you know, sooner than later, just so that we can also address some of the, any of these items that come up because before we know it, you know, special town meeting will be up, be here before we know it.
It does, yeah, time does creep up on us, so.
Okay, sounds good. So are, anything else by other members? Our next meeting is the twenty.
April twenty-second. Gene, you mentioned that you will not be attending, which is fine, or maybe virtual, but let's just, let's just say no. Right, sure. And then you were virtual.
I'll be, I will be attending virtually for this meeting. I'll be able to participate virtually.
And then.
It's at school vacation week.
Yeah.
At school vacation week.
Is that a problem for either of you folks? Tim or Mike?
I'll be here.
You don't wanna be with the kids?
They'll be there all week.
And Mike, you'll?
I'm here.
You'll be in attendance?
Okay.
Jim, I believe, it's after taxes, so he might be a little freer. Can't speak for him, but he'll likely be attended.
What do we anticipate having on the?
Yeah, so the trash lane item, the first item tonight that was continued. There's a special permit application for indoor, indoor pickleball at the former Bed and Bath Beyond.
Indoor pickleball at the former Bed Bath and Beyond?
Yep.
Okay.
And then a discussion item, not a public hearing, but just a discussion item about the, the citizen, the three citizens petitions for the annual town meeting that are related to planning and zoning.
Yeah, there were, there were three, three citizens petition, I think they were discussed at the last select board meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Dealing with the, not to get into it, but like dealing with the, you know, potential study of the MBTA zoning and.
Yep. So those are the three items for our April twenty twenty-second. Those are the only, so the application, well, the two applications is the trash lane and the, the pickle, the pickleball. We don't have any, as, as we speak, there are no other planning board applications, you know, for future meetings.
And so, and just so, and so the, the indoor pickleball at the former Bed Bath and Beyond, is that a?
It's a special, special permit.
Not site plan review.
Not site plan review, but just a special permit for the use because it's.
Like indoor amusement.
Indoor entertainments, facility, it's like four words, it's like entertainment, sports, inside, indoor type. So it just in commercial three, that type of use just requires a special permit.
Okay. Got it. Okay, very good. Thank you. Anything else from fellow members? Okay, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Have a good night. Thank you.